Annual Road Race, come on up.
Linda.
Please approach the bench. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself with your address for the record.
I am Linda Factor and I live at fifteen West Gate Lane in Cohasset. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Shall I tell you why I'm here or will you ask me?
Yes ma'am.
Please go.
I am a member of Cohasset Rotary Club. I direct the Cohasset Road Race by the Sea. We're in our forty-third year. It is a fundraiser. We are all volunteers. The money we raise goes from anything to high school scholarships in Cohasset to clean water projects in the Dominican Republic. It could be anything. Rotary is about service of self humanitarian efforts.
And polio vaccines.
Polio vaccines and we, although this is not officially a town event, we think of it as a town event. Our sponsors are local corporations, our volunteers, our residents, a lot of our runners, our residents. And we couldn't do without all of you and police and fire. So I am here to get approval for the race which we, um, is scheduled for Sunday, March thirty-first at one P M. There's a walk that goes with that, the Frank Coffee Memorial Walk, which is at ten A M, which has usually, you know, a little over a hundred people. Um, that also raises money. And what else can I tell you? I always like to talk about the weather. This is the year that it's going to be.
Do you need volunteers? You can make that announcement.
Yes, we can always use volunteers for the road race. We are always welcoming new potential Rotary members to the Light Keepers House. On Monday at six-thirty, we meet every Monday. We have dinner and we have speakers and, uh...
People want to volunteer, who should they contact?
They can contact, uh, Road Race by the Sea actually. Uh, we have an email, roadracebythec at gmail dot com. And if they send a message about volunteering for the road race or becoming a Rotarian, I'll get it and will forward it to the appropriate people.
Thank you. Anything new or different? That's what people always ask me about this.
Very excited about the new bridge.
Yes.
And to say that the five mile race was fun. Uh, actually it was more fun for a lot of people. We had, we had some new runners come because they are afraid of ten K but thought that five miles was doable. And I'm hoping that they will now transition into the ten K. So the only new thing is that it's old again. Old is new again. So the bridge, the ten K, back hopefully up to about twelve hundred participants. It was down last year, weather related and, uh, course related.
Just put a finish line at Robin's Garage and call it.
That's right. That's right. Have an option.
An early out.
So after forty-three years, there's not, I, uh, I'm happy to say there's not a lot that's new for this year. It seems to work and we have fun and we raise money.
Great, congratulations. It's always fun.
Move that we approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. You are all set for Sunday, March thirty-first at one P M.
Thank you.
Thanks Linda.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you all.
And it seems so quick and official, but we did get their full application and campus, everything else.
We signed on a couple of licenses that just came back.
Okay, we have some licenses signed. Did Chris go to get Paula?
Yeah.
Paula Stan?
Yep.
So, um, we are just gonna take a minute and sign some licenses and then we're having an investment update. She talks real fast. We can get back on schedule. Really exciting for me.
Don't ask any questions. There's a really crappy quarter, okay? Where's this?
You're our investment man.
Oh, that was just the backup for that showing approval by the A B C C.
Which one's this?
That's a backup.
For which, uh?
It shows the approval of those licenses.
For the Tom and Vic?
For the, uh... Paula, we're just walking through some because they're a little later. We're gonna get out of here. Thank you for hanging in there for a little, yeah, little later.
Change of man.
Right, so. Okay. Um, so if everybody has the investment update in front of them, Paula, whenever you're ready.
Aye. Paul, one hours, the Factor. Um, this is as of September, sorry, I was unable to make the last time. We had scheduled this.
No problem.
Um, the returns are better though than they have been, so that's fine.
Excellent.
Um, expectable trusts are up about two and a half for the quarter, um, but even for the calendar year to date, about, uh, point nine for the year and three point six for three years and five years. Our permanent trusts are up, uh, about five percent for the quarter, one point three for the calendar year to date, three point four for the year, seven point three for three years and six point one since the, um, two thousand and fourteen when we started. Um, the other post-employment funds are up two point three percent for the quarter, uh, two point three to four point two for the calendar year to date, five point two to eight point two for the year and eight to ten or so for the three years and five to seven since inception. Um, and, you know, over the course of the, the quarter, um, we had three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars plus for, uh, income.
Are those, are, are they gross numbers? So, for instance, take a look at, uh, Prett on O P E B.
Net of fees, is that what you mean?
Are they, they are net of fees?
They are, they're all net of fees. I get special pick work from Prett with net of fees. Pretty visual listed that way, but...
They are benchmark hugging.
Yeah. And we're getting closer to our benchmarks and, and like, actually as you look further out. You know, in the, the legalist ones, we're actually falling behind on our benchmarks.
Yep.
So...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay.
No, it'd be interesting to see your end.
Yeah. Paula, we're in it for the long game. Isn't that what investment people tell you, right?
The long game, very long game.
Most of the money is, is fine.
Especially municipalities.
Well, some of it is, I mean, some of it is like stabilization type stuff, so it's not as long.
Right.
Certainly all the trust funds are very long, the O P E B is very long.
Yeah.
Actually, I'd be, I'll be interested to see because they, frankly, the, especially the permanent trust with, uh, that Rockland has has been rock steady.
Yeah.
So I, I, I'll be surprised if it's not a pleasant surprise. Which is to say it's smaller than it looks. Okay.
Okay, great. Um, financial management policies.
Right.
Now, these policies, um, went into effect May twelfth, two thousand and twelve. They actually predate Chris, Dawn and I, that your entire financial team, um...
I was here.
Yes. Um, but what we did, now obviously since we, we put in some policies, the debt, the reserve and cash and investment and stuff like that and those all kind of, um, expand upon these. Um, the other thing in here is it talked about earning a triple A. We've gotten that. So for housekeeping, we wanna look at that and start talking about maintaining triple A. Um, the other piece, um, if you look at policy statement one, I've added a definition. The reason for that is is because we needed for the budget document in order to, to, um, to go for the award. One of the criteria is to have the definition, so I'm putting it here. You can, we can change the definition to whatever you like, but I just kinda drafted something. Um, looking down at item number four and five, and, um, those were added. I think Dawn put those in.
I think that's...
And a couple were taken out, having to do with stabilization and debt because those are whole separate policies now, so we don't really wanna address them here. Um, six, having to do with the five-year capital improvement was something that I believe Dawn added, as well as the next two, enterprise funds and trust funds. Um, and then, let's see. Nine, it's just minor kind of changes. Ten is the housekeeping, dealing with the fact that we, um, we're all, we're now investing in O P E B.
Let's, can I stop you for a second?
Okay.
Just step back for a second, uh, and this is for the board. This is the first time I've ever seen in writing for, from a town-generated document, the statement with respect to the enterprise funds being fully self-sufficient operationally. All right, it's a big deal. Um, so that means on a cash-on-cash basis, they're not expecting, not asking and not anticipating, uh, town, town funding outside of the user base.
Municipality funding, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I mean, that's, it, it, like I said, that's a big deal because it's, while it's always been assumed, it's never been stated.
Yep. Excellent.
Um, and, let's see, eleven, again, is dealing with the fact that we already have our triple A and twelve is referring to the other policies that we talked about. So, um, some has been added, but some of it is maintenance and, so I am, well, the financial team is proposing this for your, um, perusal.
Yeah, just one, just one edit I'd, I'd propose in this.
Sure.
Is very minor. Um, I think it's item seven, no, I'm sorry, ti- item, item eleven. The town will identify options to reduce the levy limit so long as, uh, as, so long as triple A bond rating is maintained and unfunded liabilities of the town are funded. Okay, so that's a little far out. Yet, it, it...
Yes, but that's, that's what was there as far as...
No, 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 I know, I know. The unfunded liabilities piece is something I, at, at some point, I encourage the board before annual town meeting to review
Yep.
the policies as they exist, that one in particular, um, for the, 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 what's the word I'm looking for? For the plausibility of it. Um, if we're looking, if we're not gonna touch a levy limit until we have all of our unfunded liabilities fully funded, then we've gotta get out of, we've gotta got a Norfolk pension soon because we're never gonna get there. And, uh, you know, and we, I think it's, it's plausible to ask, at what point is it reasonable to say that we've made extraordinary headway on O P E B and we can afford to take, uh, you know, a, a half step back away from a two and a half declared increase year after year?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
So I, this, this was, um, when we discussed putting this on the agenda, it was really for this initial presentation, but I totally agree. I would like to have a, like, this as a real agenda item once we button up the warrant and, um, have those discussions. We'll also have a, a O P E B report later.
Yeah, and I think the conver- that, that conversation specifically with item eleven is one that really needs to, uh, engage Dawn and, Dawn and Paula as, and, and certainly O P E B.
Yep.
Uh, because it's, it brings up a lot of questions.
Right.
This is, I, this is an item that we generated, I recognize. And so now the question is, I mean, is it realistic to ask ourselves that we're ever going to get to the point where we're fully funded?
Right.
And I, I would say on the pension, the answer's no unless we make a change.
And P E B is actually having those just very theoretical discussions.
Yeah.
And Dawn's part of all of those, which is good. So. All right.
So the impetus for this is for the budget document, so if, if it's possible.
Yeah, we'll go with this.
Um, yeah.
That's what we...
So. Anything we wanna talk about?
Do you want to vote on that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The vote on that?
A vote on what, the changes?
No, that we're gonna, we're gonna accept the changes.
We're gonna accept the changes proposed for, specifically for the F Y twenty budget document.
So, oh, I, I just, point of clarification, for that specific purpose.
Correct.
Yes, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
So you just accepted all those changes or just the one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, for, for, for this document.
But you did the so.
We'll, we'll...
We'll resurface them for discussion after.
Because of the warrants, Dawn.
Yeah.
That's fine.
But you can use it for your document for right now.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you Paula.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Um, so while the warrant has been set, uh, the town meeting's been set by the board for April twenty-ninth, uh, as a formal act to shake open the warrant. Although there, there's already by law timeframe that are kicking into place anyway. Uh, it's just a, a good practice to formally open.
Can, can you remind us in the audience when citizens petitions, which are the first articles that have to be?
Yeah, it's in, I, I wanna say February thirteenth.
Okay, but it's about mid-February. So we still have about...
It's about mid-February. There's, there's a good month.
Okay. And I think...
And there's information on the website. People are curious. I believe it's on the clerk section. There's a form. We actually made it easier to form and there's an explanation. And if anyone has any questions, they can stop by the office here or where they can also go to the clerk's office.
And what's the timetable for the, um...
Uh, thank you, Tracy. It's actually, uh, it is February thirteenth.
Okay, thanks. What's the timetable for the budget document?
Uh, two weeks.
Okay.
It's the plan.
I have a, a separate question on the warrant and that's, having read an article in the paper, I was surprised to find that there's some, some, uh, town support, town staff support for, stated in the article, for two alternative energy, um, promoted.
Oh.
Conceptual articles.
The headline would make you infirm.
So here's, 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 here's where I'm going with the question. That's, that's, that's the statement of what I absorb. Um, number one is that support accurate and, okay, and then se- the second question then follows that, are we anticipating, um... Hi Casey.
We're getting bumped over here.
Are we anticipating, um...
I got my legs up.
Um, two articles coming forward from alternative energy?
Um, there are, I, I've, I've talked to several different citizens about, uh, multiple different articles. Um, there's a potential, so, so, there's nothing in hand at this point. There wasn't anything. Uh, there's two that involve energy, electrical aggregation, something that's been talked about, that someone came to meet with myself and, uh, and our director of planning, um, one of the members of the alternative energy committee, and I know they talked about it, they're meeting last night, but I was not at it. Uh, and there's also an, an affirmational, getting the town to a greener place faster than the state's goals. I don't know that alternative energy is going to formally request that those be put on the warrant by the selectmen. It's possible I can go a citizen's petition route. We'll know in the next month. There's been, someone who does not like the plastic bag ban. Uh, he apparently wants plastic bags back. Um, I don't know if he's gonna go forward or not with a, uh...
I have to tell you, they, I do miss them. They're useful for kitty litter.
I, same thing.
Well, stick 'em out and hang 'em if you wanna go.
Right, and you can buy at the dollar store a little plastic.
But I gotta tell you, paper works well there too.
Yes.
Um...
And there was another, uh, there's a, this, there's an ongoing, you know, there's been, I don't think it's been a town meeting that I've been part of yet that has not had a conversation about extending a sewer district, so there's a possibility of a conversation with extending a sewer district.
Oh, sewer district.
A sewer district, but I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's none of these have actually taken form. Um, council will be in. I think we're gonna try to set that up for, um, the first meeting of February, oh, oh, a, a Tuesday later in this month. If we get town council, we've had him in. If people wanna just talk about the process, make sure their article is even legal.
Conform, right.
So, uh, we'll formally reannounce that data. Probably be the end of the month.
So just on the alternative energy, so my understanding is there, there is, there's an individual getting a community group together to discuss and, and they may come up with a title, Cohasset for Greener Energy or I don't know what, but they are meeting, um, I believe, Sunday the twenty, either this Sunday, I don't know, it doesn't matter, it's not an official town, uh, meeting, but, um, they will, they, they have two, as you said, an aggregation and a kinda greener energy, whatever, energy commitment, that they did discuss at alternative energy to see if alternative energy committee had any interest in endorsing them and bringing them to us for the warrant. Is, is that correct? That they were gonna go there first?
Yes, yeah, but I don't, I don't know what happened.
And if that, if they weren't, and I would imagine if alternative energy was gonna endorse it, we might have heard about it because they would wanna get on our agenda, so, um, anyway, regardless, it may be a citizen petition.
The next meeting, two weeks I'll give you an update as to where we stand on, on what's good or not.
When citizen petitions do.
February thirteenth.
So we'll know one way or another.
Uh, so, uh, February thirteenth. People can submit them earlier, but February thirteenth is the absolute deadline.
Thirteen.
Um, and again, I don't, you know, you know, I didn't know the plastic bag, bag was coming until that, that came, and so you...
And, and, because you mentioned that to me, is there some, do, should we get some advice in advance of that? Or do you think we should wait till it materializes? Like whether town meeting can just undo it or whether it requires some other...
Yeah, I've already asked council, so, so only town meeting can undo it.
And they can simply undo it?
Yeah, town meeting can always, I mean, it's a law.
And like every other article, it would go to the attorney general's office.
Yeah, the, the, town, town meeting is the, is the legislative body of the town, so I was asked to explore whether that could be a public referendum. Council's responded no. There is no referendum provision for that in, in the town. So you go to town meeting. Yeah, so you'd, you'd go the same route at West Pass in the first place.
Just have to ask a, a question of the board, and it's only relevant to that, this particular item. Have you had any problems adapting?
No.
Me neither. I, the only, the interesting part for me is if I go into the store and get two or three things, I end up walking out without a bag.
Exactly, yeah.
And that's, you know, otherwise, otherwise I get reusable bags in the back of my car.
Yeah, so I think kitty litter is the only...
A number of groups I know have, have made it their mission to give out reusable bags. I know Cohasset and Safe Harbor did that. I know one of the girls' sports teams did that.
So was this a citizen's potential petition? Is that what you...
Yes, a gentleman who lived in town called up to me.
Yeah, that's fine, and, um, what's the percentage voter on that? Do you happen to know what type you had? Fifty percent?
Well, oh, to pass a law, yeah, yeah.
Again, to, to...
Yeah, I believe it was, I, yeah, 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 yeah. To pass normal legislation, it's usually like fifty percent.
I think it was overwhelming.
Yeah, I, I think it was passed, if not unanimously, because I think it was a few objections, pretty close to it.
Probably stimulate attendance anyways.
Yeah. Um, so, but again, I, I...
We always have...
People would show up again.
When people come in, I meet with them as a, you know, and, and explain the process and I don't take positions and I did not take a position on these others, and I explain that here's, you know, and, and the steps that they would, I would recommend that they take.
And make sure they get the legal services we give to everybody, no, anything like that.
And process questions, so how do you do it? And, uh, so I don't take positions on, on...
No, you shouldn't.
Unless, unless I'm advocating that you take one.
We try not to.
Uh, like the budget stuff like that, otherwise I don't take positions.
So, um, we need a motion to open the warrant for annual town meeting for April twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen?
So moved.
Do you have a sec? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Warrant is open.
Warrant is open and, um...
It's exciting.
Okay, year-to-date budget update, Dawn.
How we doing tonight?
Good.
Good.
And I was told if, well, I said if you don't, if you haven't fully closed, um, December.
Yeah, so I, I...
Just give us an update.
I ran reports for you guys through November and unfortunately didn't get a chance to print out the water and sewer. And so I'm gonna give you guys what I have right now and send you everything tomorrow, including all the detailed line item, uh, ledger reports.
Okay, can you give us a verbal, just...
Yeah, I'll, I'll...
General overview?
I'll go through everything.
Thank you.
Nah, I didn't wanna waste too many trees, so I just...
Appreciate that.
It's gonna take a longer though.
Yeah, we'll be taking away paper next.
We've got a nice big screen in the back and it'll be good.
Virtual kit. Uh, so I'll start with the general fund. And through November, um, we're in good shape. Our real estate and personal property tax receipts are just slightly above expectations. So at this point, we should be seeing, you know, about forty-two percent received at this point based on, you know, five out of twelve months. And real estate, personal property is slightly above that. Penalties and interest, we are actually well above that, almost seventy percent due to a significant amount of collections of tax liens and deferred taxes. We actually so far have collected two hundred and twelve thousand dollars of, of tax liens and deferred taxes, which essentially just falls to the bottom line, free cash, as, don't relate to prior year, um, prior year taxes.
This is five of twelve months.
Yes.
Yep.
I found, how feasible is, is it? We've discussed this actually several times. Some of us have a business background where we used to look into budgets, so when I was looking at these things in my business career, I'd see what the budget was for the five months and then what that year-to-date was for the five months, so I could see what the variance was. Is it, are we not budgeting each month? Can't we do that? Have we discussed this before? Am I losing it?
Yeah, it's a format question.
Yeah.
But did different receipts come in at, like, quarterly as opposed to monthly?
So we, are we, when we budget, we do, for, for the municipality, we don't budget for what the first quarter should look like?
We budget for the entire year.
And then you take the months in to compare?
Yeah.
So is that, is that, is that, is it not feasible for governments?
You could put seasonality into it, but...
You could, yeah, a lot of the receipts like, coming from the state for meals and, and, uh, room tax comes in on...
So just a question, because you, you're the guru of it. What does the state do?
Uh, they, they do it monthly, but then they also have the full year.
But if the state can do it monthly, why couldn't we?
I, let's step back for a second. What do you, monthly, you mean budget month by month?
Yeah, so what I'm looking at here is that we, we're looking f- five months, okay? And then we're comparing against what we budgeted for the whole year. And that, that's not totally meaningful to me or I imagine it most anybody else. So ideally, I'd wanna say five months and what would, do we budget for five months? Now, if that's not practical, could we do it quarterly, you know?
You know, one thing, the state does m- monthly and then they'll do year-to-year compared to the previous year. So they'll do month-to-month compared to last year.
But we have no idea when we look at, when we look at a form...
And that's effective. What, what Paul's suggesting is, you know, you do vis-a-vis last year, so you do it off the last year's...
Well, that's, that's another thing we could do.
The next page?
Page three.
Is that, so, uh, because we could, you could look at something like this and you could think you were doing fine for five or six months when you get a big surprise that, you, you know, at the end of the year. So I'm just trying to... It's, it's, to me, the government, we, and this is not so much for you particularly, Dawn, but this is the way governments do it. I would think town economic, uh, town, uh, financial...
It's just, it's just a matter of formatting the report. I mean, the information's in there, right? Because Dawn, you book it on a monthly basis, don't you?
We book revenue daily.
You just book it, so, so if you pulled out a monthly...
We have, we have a budget that's balanced as of April.
Yeah.
So if you run starts, that whole budget's uploaded.
Yep.
Revenues and expenditures and, and it ties.
Could you do it month-to-month and then compare it to month-to-month the year before?
Yeah.
And likewise, year-to-year.
And that's what we're doing. For some reason, uh, in the past, we didn't put real estate. I can add real estate as one of those lines.
Because, because sometimes if you've got like a, a month where taxes are due, you're gonna see, you know, year-to-year, it looks like you're suddenly down on month four or five, and then let's say the fifth month or the sixth month is when the major real estate tax revenue comes in.
It's like excise taxes, right.
Just like the excise tax where, you know, February they kick in or, you know, there's suddenly a big boom at the end of the year where people buy cars or, you know, we'll see a...
Yeah, I get it.
Year-to-year, you can do that. That's what the, kinda what the state does. And they actually send a little, little rider out and they say, you know, this is a small income tax month, this is a large income tax month, this is the, typically the ninth out of twelve, um, income tax month, you know, revenue month for that.
To me, the, you know, if we, if we are gonna look monthly, to me, the, the most helpful thing is mostly on the expense side.
Right.
You know, because that's where, because we know what the pattern is for income for the most part, right? But if you look at general government, is that seventy percent, right? I think that's where, when you see those percentages based on the year, it's not, if it's not forty-two, so that...
But the way software works, it's just a table generator. It's not extra work for Dawn to put the monthly revenues up here.
Well, that's big.
That's good.
I, I do manually do all these.
Yeah, okay.
So it doesn't matter, I can do it. I just wanna get on the same page of how you guys wanna see something, if I do.
Well, I could have some software.
Software, the, the general ledger report, that's gonna be uploaded once a year, amended as, you know, town meeting votes and stuff like that occur. But otherwise, these are gonna be done once a year when we balance the budget.
Yeah.
How we report, I can modify all of the boards these days. So we can, we can talk about and, and expand this four-pager as much as we want.
Yeah, I mean, do, do you have reasonable software that you can do month-to-month compared to the month-to-month last year, year-to-year?
Not through the software, no.
Okay.
Can, can we get it? Can you get, could you get it?
Yeah, I mean, we have, most of that information is in here. So month-to-month, again, when you, when you look at the second packet, motor vehicle excise, license of permits, fees.
It's not month-to-month though. It's an actual one fifty thousand.
It's, it's year-to-year, month-to-month. So one column.
One of my own.
Um, so I know you're... The second packet, the second packet is the, is the chart.
This is for the picture people.
Yeah.
Like me.
So this is a month-to-month showing last year, this year.
Yeah.
Um, and revenues and then key expenses.
Exactly.
Electricity, you know, utilities, police fire overtimes, snow ice, things that are historically big to us and...
We're way out of whack on stamps.
Yeah.
What's our stamp policy?
I don't wanna get us derailed. Let's just get a summary and then we can talk.
The color version's a little easier to see.
This is very helpful, actually, for us visual learners.
Are we gonna add any other category? If there's any thick of the category you wanna see at the heart of it?
Well, from our financial people, what would be the bigger categories we could get in addition?
I think the suggestions Paul made is good, and this is a pretty good breakout of all the aggregate categories we need to look at. If we find, you know, if we're looking at this and we find a line item that looks like we wanna drill down on it, we can ask Dawn to come back with more information, but...
Like a this?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Yeah, one of the, one of the things, Chris, that I, you know, not to give you more work, but one of the things that we did do a couple of years ago was just get a summary.
Yeah, so...
So when we get these, right, we have kind of a narrative that, oh, pay attention to the general government line. That looks like it's over. So that we don't necessarily, because I've worked with boards my whole life as an employee, reporting to a board, and I know different board members wanna see things different ways. So I think narratives are very helpful to explain the numbers and then we can add, because I don't wanna create more work. You can ask to...[1748.71]
Well, historical packet has had a summary.
I was gonna say, I thought we were doing that too.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I.
We didn't get it this time.
No, 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 so, so, um, we've been, we're, we're also in the midst of budget meetings this year, so, yeah, so you. You, we will continue with a narrative, the visual and the numbers.
May I, may I suggest, because you had, you had that format, it's straightforward.
Yep.
Executive summary, alright, what's happening in revenue, items for retention, what's happening in expense, items for retention. Overall review of what you've seen, doesn't have to be opinionated, it can very simply be that our revenues are coming in slightly ahead of expectation, we, we trace that back to, uh, fines and forfeitures, right, whatever it might be. Or our expenses are coming in a bit higher than anticipated because police overtime has been greater than anticipated.
Super.
That's enough.
And then, you know, we'll dig into the rest, but at least we know where to direct our vision.
Definitely, that's good, so can we have that every month?
Yeah.
And, and like, it's, it's interesting that licenses and permits are off, you know, that says, that's a leading indicator of what the plants are in town.
So, again, and, and unfortunately I did this right, right before the meeting, got it together, we had about ten budget meetings the last two days, so couldn't, couldn't get that summary together, but the reason why license and permits are down is due to timing, actually. So, again, I guess if you had that month-to-month from last year to this year, you could probably see that trend.
Yeah.
That's due to the timing of when our all facility stickers are sold.
We, we moved them back early in the year, so, there used to be a lot of lag in July, now it all comes in, in May.
Those are the details that are helpful.
Right, so that is.
It would seem to me, a, a, a big one too would be building permits.
Yeah, well, and building permits are up, actually, they're fifty-seven percent higher.
Exactly, and that's a good thing to see here, because even, that's what the United States government looks at. Can we, can we make sure we have building permits?
Super. But, but actually, you know, building permits is a really important indicator for us, it should be a dashboard number.
When you hit, when you hit the mid-year, uh, this, through December, you'll, you'll have an error.
Let's do that and then, but could you add it to the monthly too?
Yeah, yeah, I know, but I'm saying when it, the mid-year, I mean, the monthly through December is mid-year, yeah.
Cause I, I know everybody understands how important the building permits, cause they lead to all the other economics.
Those come, the building permit does provide those to us separately.
Actually, I see those separately too, so I can include just take theirs.
Yeah.
Without creating, but we should have it in this.
I take theirs, I rely on the ledger numbers, so.
Add one more little.
Yeah.
Excuse, Don, is that, like, is, is building permits within the licenses and permits revenue line item?
It has to be, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, Kevin, Kevin referenced the number being up very strongly, and I can't find it in this packet, and maybe I'm missing a page.
Right, no, and so you, you know, I can see that unless you looked at the line item in detail of what's included there.
Right.
Bear with me.
No, but he's talking about getting the, the generated report from Softwrite, the old reports we used to get.
Right.
Hold on, so though, I'm not gonna see that unless I look at the line item in detail, which is to say that you have it and I don't.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, it now exists, so you can.
No, no, I just, I'm, I'm, I wanted to make sure that I was not.
Right.
You're not missing it.
We, we made, we made a policy not to share that, it's like, it's me, but everybody's obviously, um, welcome to it.
In two weeks, you'll get the look at, this was to get a quick update as to where we stand. The whole, for the next meeting, hit the budget packet for this going forward, and then by the end of the month, you'll have the, through December and then.
So in summary, we're doing well and?
In summary, we're doing very well.
Well, it's a major, um.
I went through the expenditure ledger, nothing out of the ordinary, I mean, we're in line with pretty much everything. You'll see a couple of areas where, um, you know, general government spent maybe only thirty percent, but that's, that's probably timing, we have s-, uh, some money in, in the town manager's budget for all the union contracts that have not all been ratified and reclassed to the various departments, so that's why that, you see that there, yes, Steve?
They see, the, the, the only thing that I'd pick out is we're, we're through November thirtieth, so five months on the fiscal year, right?
Yes.
So we're at fifty percent of fifty, fifty percent, fifty-one percent, I never quite figured that out, revenues. We're fifty-one percent of revenues, but less than halfway through the year.
Right.
Is that right?
Yeah.
That's the right read, and knowing that we can't spend more than we budget, I don't really care where the, where the expenses are, with the exception of overtime.
We're at forty-three percent on expenses, it's the reverse of the number you see there.
Right, right, it's the, it's a reciprocal, which by the way, was a formatting thing, would you please change this format?
I know, but it's very frustrating. The first time I looked at it, I'm like, wait a second.
Anything in parentheses is unfavorable in my world, so.
No, I don't.
That's right, all of our worlds, right?
Uh, no, like, if, if it's in parentheses and it's the balance on your mortgage, well, life is pretty good, because it may be going down.
And if it has two dots, it's a smiley.
There you go, I'm like you, Kevin.
Thanks for sharing.
I, I do the internet stuff.
It's a colon.
This is a man who used to run businesses. Large, large business.
I'm reduced to smileys.
There's nothing wrong with smileys, just leave it at that, okay, any other questions for Don?
Significant, we potentially could have good turnbacks this year and plenty of cash flow.
Well, it's halfway through the year, so the cash flow's good, we have some grants that have come in, um.
And we have a winter.
And we still have winter, I mean, you know, I, the good news is that we haven't spent a lot.
In Camel was?
The bad news is that, you know, last year, yeah, I mean, it got, it got cold before Thanksgiving, and then it's been pretty moderate. Though we're on a roller coaster this last couple, this last week. Um, if you remember a few winters ago, we didn't have anything until the end of January, then it stopped going to March.
That was the worst.
So, um.
I remember Texas, but.
No, no, I know, so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, wanna hold out too much quite yet on that stuff. But I think, you know, we're, 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 we're stable, you know, we.
Or where we should be right now.
Where we should be, we're, we're keeping it at the triple A level, we have the reserves, you know, and, and again, you look at the volatility of the national stuff. We gotta, we gotta, you know, we, we're, we're, we're locking more and more of the budget, we just got our official confirmation of our pension numbers from, from, um, Norfolk County, which are a little bit less than we had, well, what we anticipated from what they told us, but they're less than we had originally projected. Um, we're gonna get healthcare numbers in, oh, two weeks at the Maya, at least the, the, the range. And at this point, I'm hoping there will be a shallow end of the pool again, based on our, 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 our loss ratios.
Mm-huh.
And I'm also cautiously optimistic, but I haven't seen the final, the final numbers that our workers comp and property casualty numbers should be better. Because we had some bad claims two years ago that should be gone, uh, so, we'll see. You know, we've been working real hard on safety committee, we've been working real hard on, on, um, um, uh, s-, uh, reward, you know, getting good policies and practices that would not only are better for our operations, but we get rewards from Maya for it. So that's been, it's been a good thing, and, and in fact, we're, we're going to be named a, a top Maya community in MMA meeting. We're gonna be a, we'll be recognized at the meeting as one of that.
Are you going up to get the award?
I don't know what we're gonna get, I think, I know it's been pictures, we did a whole, we did a whole photo shoot here, in case he actually got the pictures too, so, uh.
It's interesting.
And I will be there.
So, um, uh, we, I, if we get an award, yeah, anyone, if anyone wants to make that Maya lunch, you're, you're welcome, so, uh, it's, it's the Saturday.
First of the lunch?
It's, it's the Friday. Yeah, it's a Friday, um.
No, the, the Maya lunch is usually, isn't it usually Saturday, cause that's usually when Paul DuRance is takes.
I'll, we'll double check it, but, um, so.
Yep.
We are gonna be recognized, which is a good, which is, that's a good thing, so.
Excellent.
So, before we let you, anything you, how you're doing, you're within your first year, you saw your job.
Yeah.
How are you getting this, getting the support from us that you need or whatever?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, everything's been going great, love it here, so.
Anything while you're in front of us you wanna ask for?
And on TV and, and unsuspected, right.
Ten-week vacation.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Forget that question.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don, appreciate it, and thanks for scrambling, I know, you know, it's been kind of, it's been short since after the holidays, things get crazy.
These will, these will become, uh, we'll get to have in these monthly, uh, these bad. The format everybody wants.
Great, thank you.
Saturday, Saturday, January nineteenth.
Good night.
Good night, thank you. That's a lunch, okay, alright, thanks, see you tomorrow.
Okay, um, uh, next up is just a, just, just sort of a notification of the Safe Harbor Community Program. Do you wanna introduce it? Do you want me to? I got all the information, so, um, on Saturday, January, uh, sorry, Thursday, January twenty-ninth, right, have that date right?
Yes.
It is a Thursday, January twenty-ninth, six-thirty to eight-thirty at Wilka Commons. Um, Safe Harbor, um, is sponsoring a program called Where Do I Begin? Everything a co-hic parent should know about sexual assault, to have the talk with your children. Um, they have two professional, I'm sorry, that is a Tuesday night.
Tuesday.
Um, they have two, uh, very well-known kinda industry speakers, um, Katie Tyler and Marissa Varasso of Health Imperatives, Inc. They'll discuss, um, encouraging children, how to take ownership of their body and what language to use, uh, distinguishing safe touches versus unwanted touches, and having, um, developmentally appropriate conversations. So, um, everybody in the community is welcome to attend, leaders, teachers, healthcare professionals, coaches, parents. Um, and I think this is obviously, given the world we live in and, and, um, the commitment the town has to, um, you know, really educating all of us about risks everywhere, um, that this is an important, um, important conversation to have led by professionals who know what they're doing and how to, how to approach this subject, and I encourage everybody to attend.
Uh, I really wanna thank Nicole Garrity and Christine Murphy and folks in Safe Harbor, uh, for, you know, branching out, and we, we had a good conversation about like, s-, uh, uh, doing a program like this, and in fact, this group, Health Imperatives, um, has, we have worked with them before, uh, they've done a lot of work on the communities. Um, and they're, they're, this is the first time I've gotten a partner from them, so we're actually pleased to bring them into town and, and get this program going. Uh, and they do a lot of other programs too, so hopefully this'll be a success, um, tough topic, but it's an important conversation that, that, uh, people need to have. Um, so, uh.
Are they working with the schools on this, or is this independent?
Uh, they, they, this is with, uh, this is, they're working with the town, uh, and I, I, it, I, they're working with the whole community.
Yeah.
So, the whole community, but it, it's a, it's not a school program per se, it's a community program, so.
Okay, um, committee update, um, we have not received any applications despite our pre, um, holiday appeal for, um, the Affordable Housing Trust, um, and also the Town Hall Building Committee. So I've been in touch with the Town Hall Building Committee, most of the people, um, are going to continue. Um, uh, Mary McGoldrick is not, Ted Lubitz is not, um, both have given me names. Um, Mary's been very helpful in outreach to, um, each of the committee members, um, to, to ascertain their willingness to stay on the committee, so.
Mark, Mark Toomey saw it.
And Mark Toomey has moved, he officially resigned, I'm sorry?
I got one application today.
You did, great, um, so we'll, we'll queue up hopefully appointments for our next meeting on the twenty-second.
Can we, so, I mean, are we gonna talk about the composition and what we're looking for, I mean, is that, are we just gonna go with whatever volunteers?
Well.
I don't mean that in a pejorative way.
No, 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 I mean, I think, I think, um, we discussed it a little bit at our last meeting, cause we were hoping to make some appointments tonight, but be, given the holidays, we didn't, um.
No, no, you weren't making any appointments.
Oh, we weren't.
No, this is just a, this is just a remind, no, no, the, 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 the deadline's the fifteenth, today's the year.
Right, the deadline's the fifteenth.
It, this is, this is on the agenda partly, primarily now to remind people, if you're interested, please put in the award.
Right.
So the, the board can consider.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
That we should do a distinct charge before we make any appointments, so that we have a charge. And so that before anybody's appointment, appointed, you know, they're to read the charge and make sure that's okay. Secondly, by having a charge and publicizing it, you, we may get more applicants.
Right.
So if you say we need town committee members, and here's the charge, cause all we've put out now is sort of a vague, and, you know, based on the history of the town hall situation. I, I, doesn't surprise me, people maybe not.
So.
So anyways, I suggest we have a distinct, you know, less than one page, but it should be a charge.
But it's the objectives we've agreed to, basically, right?
Then let's put it up, we, we have.
We, yeah, we do have the charge, and that's the other thing I meant to say, was the, the committee was formed and charged and the terms of everybody that was on the committee as of last May and active don't end until twenty-twenty. So I confirmed that, so the people who don't wanna stay on the committee, and there's just a few of them, have to formally resign. So I've been working with them to make sure they send Carol, cause they're, they're literally leaving in the middle of a term for a set committee. So, I'll, I'll recirculate that charge and, um, based, which we did when we set the committee last year. Add, there was a little bit of changes to the, the goals that we discussed at our last meeting, I'll make sure those are on there too. I'll get that out to everybody in the next, you know, day.
And then put it on an agenda, discuss it for five or ten minutes and say.
Get on with it.
This is our endorsed charge and then fill the seats.
Yep, yep.
Sounds good to me.
All right, um, okay, town manager update?
Um, I just wanted to make two, uh, I think I mentioned a personal announcement, but I'm gonna formally announce um, that our new HR director, Miriam Johnson, will start, uh, Monday, the fourteenth. Uh, she joins us from Dedham, where she was the HR directors, we're very excited to have her. We were actually in a neck-and-neck competition with, uh, Ingam on this one. So, the person who finished number two for us is now their HR director.
Yeah.
So she was great, so.
They're back. They're probably back and forth, seeing each other in the hallways.
I, I, I actually believe that they were both competing for the same job, so, um, uh, we're excited, I'm actually excited for the person going to Ingam as well. So it'll be great for them, but, um, so Miriam starts on Monday, we're very excited to have her start, and, um, and we have a new library director. So that's come together as well, so Megan James will be joining us the following Tuesday, the day after Martin Luther King Day. Um, she has, uh, started her career here in class as the adult librarian, and then went off to Holbrook, where she eventually moved up to become head librarian. Uh, I'm sorry, ran off.
So.
Can we meet these people?
Yeah, yeah, so, so, yes, I'm hoping to have them both at the next meeting.
Okay.
So the next meeting is the twenty-second, which is her first day?
Yes, it's, I think it'll be Megan's first day, it'll be Miriam's second.
Right, but, um, I do have that on, so if we could, they could come and we'll introduce them first thing.
Um, in terms of, uh, elder affairs, just a reminder that Coral Brandy's last day is a week from Friday. Uh, she's the, uh, the, our elder affairs director's retiring officially, um, and Miriam, our new HR director, will lead the, the, the charge on that. We have been meeting with the board, the elder affairs board, uh, the advisory board, we've been, uh, talking to staff, getting input on the job description and the goals, and let them know the next director, you know, what we're looking for in the next director. Um, and I expect we'll have an interim director, uh, appointed, um, before Coral's retirement. Uh, just to keep everything smooth and running, and we're gonna figure out how we're gonna help plug in some extra hours there, uh, to help them out. So, uh, so that's, I think that's moving along smoothly as well. Uh, wasn't anticipated enough, a couple of, you know, big retirements as they happen, but, uh, Paul's done an outstanding job earlier, I thank Paul Lennar as for stepping in, and she's been the acting HR director. She's done a great job of, uh, keeping these processes going, and she's helped lead a very successful HR director search. And partnering with the board of trustees of the library and staff, a great library director search, so we've been very fortunate to get two really high-quality candidates, I think you both. I think everyone will be very excited to meet them.
Great.
And we're also in the process of filling, I think we're very close to finding a position in the, in the treasurer collector's office, the payroll benefits clerk. And also we have, we have a, uh, position in, um, facilities, uh, that's been open, we're gonna be filling shortly as well, I think, so. We're coming, it's been, it's been a very productive, uh, couple of weeks, so it's gonna be a, it's a good start to, to the new year, there is.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, that's the quick update, that's, I mean, there's a lot of other things we can talk about, but that's, that's the big update for tonight.
That's what we're gonna talk about tonight, right, um, okay, select my comment period, Steve?
Um, I just, uh, uh, as the agenda pointed out, we have executive session this evening. Um, and I'd simply like to ma- to make a public acknowledgement that, uh, conversations that take place within the executive session remain privileged and confidential, especially as they take place with attorneys. All members would be bound, all members of that meeting would be bound by the, the same request and requirement, that's it. I just wanna make sure that was a public.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Observation.
Jack?
Uh, I just wanted to get some clarification on what's going on with the MMA meeting, you know, with the details and are we going and what, what the plans are for that?
Yeah, if anyone wants to still register, uh, talk to Tracy bef- at the end of the meeting, uh, we'll register you. Um, the meeting's Friday and Saturday, the eighteenth and nineteenth, uh, you're gonna participate for part of it or the whole thing. There's, uh, there's, uh, educational sessions, there's a couple of speakers, generally the governor comes, generally some of the other constitutional officers come. I don't know if any of the federal ones will come considering what's going on in Washington right now.
They might, they like the audience.
Uh, that's true, they might, they might be there, uh, I, I, last time there was some kind of crisis, I think a year ago, right, and they wanted to come down. Um, there was people spoke, I think, by the end, so, um, but I, generally the governor speaks, and that usually is on Friday, and then there's another speaker on Saturday. So, um, we have the program in schedule, so just, you know, uh, everyone's encouraged to, you know, we, we have, I think, four folks who've signed up at this point.
Five.
Five, uh, so if anyone else.
Great staff and committee managers.
Yeah, some other, yeah, some other, we have a couple of staff, a member of another board, um.
May, may I ask that, I mean, to the extent especially that, that this, that we support such things. Um, advisory, advisory committee chair, unless the, the rest of you think differently, but the, the advisory committee, um, capital budget committee. Um, advisory, advisory committee chair, unless the, the rest of you think differently, but the, the advisory committee, um, capital budget committee.
Yeah, they're all, the, the, the invitation's always open, and we've, we've encouraged folks to, to, I'll, I'll do one more round of checking. I will say, uh, uh, not to, both John and Chapman and Sam Wakeman went to a, a capital budget, uh, planning meeting, uh, that was held up on the North Shore about a month ago. Uh, it was great, so I hope we circulated, it was, it was a, I forget what organization ran it, I don't remember, was MMA or NA PC? Uh, and they brought back some interesting stuff, some of it was stuff that we already do, and some of it was just interesting here, what the commanders are doing, so, Sam and I got to meet. So there, um, a- as we get those notices, sometimes we get them timed, and sometimes we don't, we try to make sure that we circulate them, that people wanna go up to them. So, uh, John in particular is trying to take an interest in going to some of that. There's a, there's a state association of fighting against committees and advisory committees, um, and he's been trying to get some of those meetings.
Just on the MMA thing, um, because I, it's my favorite thing, um, and I, um, the, there's a Friday lunch, it's a WEMO lunch, Women Elected Municipal Officers Meet Lunch. It's not only for women, it is attended primarily by women, but.
Men can go to?
Men can go, and it is literally the hottest ticket i- in the whole schedule, so, and I, I would encourage you to go, cause they always have a good speaker, I can't remember who it is.
I went the year before.
Yeah.
And then, uh, a woman who's a comedian, she was good.
And there's good food, and, and it's, that's just something to make sure you do, and I, and if there's staff, especially, you know, building, planning, engineering kinda staff that wanna go, I, I think the trade show is really, it's just, you know, you learn about parking meters, you know, there's, there's people trying to sell their parking meters, or their, whatever, their, uh, streetscaping, software vendors.
The software vendors, there's.
It's a, it's a nice little.
Our auditors are there, our attorneys are there, uh, the trade show floor is definitely worth wandering.
Yeah, it's just, just really just to spark some ideas and.
And if you can only come for part of, uh, just one day, uh, it's at the Heinz Convention Center. Uh, but again, registration advances definitely prefer, and I think.
Uh, tomorrow's the deadline.
Yes, the, the, the deadline for early registrations tomorrow, so please.
Please do, and save the town some money.
Yeah, please, I'll go.
And the only other thing is, if you're gonna go to the WEMO lunch, I have to know, cause you're gonna register. Correct. So.
I can't go to that.
Okay.
The day is it?
That's Friday, Friday lunch, and the Maya is on Saturday.
And the MMA lunch, we've already.
I'll, I'll go to the, I'll go to the lunch, if I go for Friday, I'm gonna go to the lunch. I'll be.
I'll go, but it, it might be embarrassing.
Paul, anything, select my comment?
Um, I think the only, one thing, the ethics test redo is up after the new year, which is now the new year, so we all have to do the ethics tests, uh, it's fairly straightforward, online.
Can you cheat?
Actually, you can, it's back and forth.
It's cute. Um, you have to laugh at the irony. And I think that was about it, that's all I could do.
Yeah, we all got something from Paul Dorensis about that, so, and we should probably figure out who to push that out to, cause it is the ethics test that everybody has to take.
Yes.
Yep, so she'll take care of that.
All committee members.
And that, that's good. Give them a deadline. Okay, Kevin?
I use the C clip fix on Wheelwright Park, the entranceway. Um, I use, I walk my dog there a lot, as I know that. But the potholes have gotten so bad that it's actually vehicle destroying. I mean, the potholes are, you know, two feet and seven or eight inches and, and a bunch of them. So much to the point where it's, it seems to me, the more I thought about it, it, to make a public park that inaccessible, it really makes it inaccessible. Uh, I got back from the C clip fixed that they're gonna go ahead and regrade it, but the point though is, is that this is a, this is a public, it's a, it's a gem of a public, you know, uh, feature of our town. Uh, why we wouldn't make sure the ro- road isn't passable so that people could get to it. There's issues with, uh, the, um, uh, safety. And a couple of people have mentioned to me, and they had thought of it, that, you know, safety or police or fire vehicles really couldn't get up there very well, and if there was a fire. The potholes are that bad, I mean, they're just terrible. And, uh, there's also, uh, access for people with disabilities couldn't make it up there either. And that's, you know, we should not have a big public area, uh, that we do not take minimal effort to take care of, to make sure there's access. It reflects badly too, when we go to the town to ask them for funds for big projects, you know, you know, and we're not taking care of basic stuff like, like this. Uh, it comes back at us, it's come back at me during the town hall discussions and so on. Anyways, I think I'm making a point on that. I don't know whether access to our other public parks are in a similar way, but I really think that I wanna bring some sensitivity to that subject, and that we should take pride in our community, that if we have these gems, that people should be able to get to it. That you should take a look if they haven't graded it already, they said they were going to, uh, Wheelwright, if you haven't seen it, it's just really terrible. You can't, you can't get up there, so.
Just, uh, uh, Kevin, you make a, a good point, but I, and I'll make an observation that goes with that. Um, not far away from where you live, or, or you, or me, is, uh, the entry to, um, trustees reservation, right? Uh, Wheel, not Wheelwright, Turkey Hill, no, not Turkey Hill either, but, uh, the.
Turkey Hill.
Woods, uh, the.
Whitney Woods.
Whitney Woods.
The passageway there gets very, uh, very, uh, rutted, and potholes grow enormously in the fall as the freezing season comes. Now, of course, that's not ours to take care of, but the same thing does happen at Wheelwright, and not, I, I, I agree with you, we should have some sort of observation, uh, structure that, that keeps, that keeps it relatively maintained, but I do have to say that this is, although it's been a mild fall or late fall, it's been really rainy. And that, that being a, a dirt passageway, it's susceptible, and so there, you know, I'd, I'd love to see.
Maybe reasons, yeah. Is there any way we could do something besides, is it feasible to make it paved or all or? I mean, I don't really know.
Usually people put gravel into those roads.
Oh, gravel?
That's how.
I, I can, I can find out why. So I think it seems right, it has gotten distinctly worse, but it's always generally bad, though it's the same thing at Whitney, you're right, so, I, I think you get the point, so. And I, um, but I will say, I did see clip fix on it, and I got a response within twelve hours saying they're gonna go and fix it, so.
That's great.
That worked, and I'd let the public know that as well.
I can just see the response now. Thank you, Mr. Selectman. I don't wanna end up a cohesive one four three.
Well, you know, they say all politics is local, and like, all local politics is, are potholes. I mean, it, like, you couldn't keep the potholes.
Yeah, that's right. Well, that's exactly, cause it came up to me when we were doing, done other projects.
It just.
I had someone send me a letter saying, why should I vote, I had this, why should I vote for this when you're not maintaining regular things? That's the kinda thing, you can't ask someone for three million dollars to do something, and you're not cleaning it, you know, and you can't drive down the streets.
It was a little more complex than that, but got it, absolutely.
Yeah, it is a little more complex.
You're right, you're right.
Alright, um, I have nothing, except glad it's January and we're back at it, and, um, it's gonna be another busy, uh, winter-spring as we head towards town meeting. Um, minutes of, uh, December eleventh, um.